...the time is six oh one, or let me look at my six oh two.
Yeah.
So this one I'd like to open up the public communication. See no interest and I'll declare the public communication closed. At this point we have an open session, we have the emergency operations center activation, two, the used car dealership code amendment, and then we'll be reassessing for real proper negotiating, so that we add a number three, four, and five with the little council. So at this point.
Can I do a real quick?
Yes.
Council member Susan Rubio.
I'll excuse her, she's not feeling good.
Okay, council member Ricardo Pacheco. Council member Monica Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Baca.
Here.
Mayor Lozano.
President.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. All right, so at this point, who's in the presentation, Daniel?
I.
You go, brother. All right.
So initially this presentation would have taken about an hour and ten minutes, and the chief gave me a pink slip and said if you go over fifteen, you're out of here. So I had to kind of unwind it. So what I did is I left, I gave everybody a packet of information that you guys could review at your own leisure. Overall, I'd like to just talk about a little bit about the emergency operations center, who's responsible for activation, and most importantly, the responsibilities of the elected officials, as well as the team, E Team members. First, in the event of a major EOC activation, the city manager acts as the director of emergency services, the chief of police acts as the assistant director of emergency services. There are the two highest officials within the city and per the municipal ordinance that can activate the EOC. And then the alternate person would be the director of recreation community services. First one, what everyone is concerned about, and these are huge questions. Number one question asked about city council, or asked by city council members, what am I supposed to do during a disaster? What is my role and responsibilities? Number two, number one again, concern of city staff. City council members don't know what they're supposed to do during a disaster, they don't know their role and responsibilities. Common question that are constantly brought up during emergency activations. The basics, what is emergency management? It's a cycle focused on emergency preparedness, you have the responsibility of each of the phases. This is the cycle, preparedness, response, recovery, mitigation. I'm gonna start off with a preparedness. Preparedness starts with all of us. Plans, training, exercises, public education, community outreach, stakeholder, a collaboration. Training, educate, and collaborate. Training, exercising, elected officials, management, staff, training. Within the next coming months, we have a lot of training that is gonna be developed, that we're gonna implement our staff, our elected officials, et cetera. Public education, literature, city's website. Mayor Pro Tem Cruz brought it up a couple weeks ago during one of our power outages with regards to having a dedicated link or some type of notification on the city's website. I'm in the process of creating that, so we have that information. We have somewhere that people can go to and access the information that I provide to you guys, we provide to the general public. Community outreach and, and community outreach and training, CERT program. We did a CERT program about two and a half years ago, was very successful, we had about forty-five plus graduates here. CERT is coming back the beginning of the year. And CERT is in collaboration with LA County Fire, so that the city doesn't have to absorb or pay for any additional cost. And then three, the collaboration develops strong partnerships amongst, among all sectors of your community. Response, stabilizing, restoring, assessing initial damage estimates, emergency, public information. How does all that tie in? City council to designated locations, family comes first. Report to the city, and this is in the event of a major incident or a major EOC activation, get a briefing. The briefing should entail some of these important factors. How bad is it? What kind of help do we need? What are our priorities? And what is needed from city council? Emergency ordinances and proclamations. In your packet, you'll find the proclamations on tab number five that are outlined for you why we need to do this, and what timeframe we have to do this within, so that we can get the ball rolling and, and proclaim our city a local state of emergency. On the streets, a priority set by the EOC, stabilize the incidents, number one. Number two, restore essential services, gas, electricity, et cetera. Assessing the damage, which is known as IDE, and you'll see that IDE again as we, as we proceed forward. This brings FEMA to town. Initial damage estimate, we're not gonna have the exact cost or the exact estimate of what kind of damages we had to our infrastructure or throughout our city, but through our public works department, our engineering, and our city planners, we're gonna have an approximate estimate of how much damages we have. And then directing the community actions, CERT. When the media comes to town, lessons learned from nine eleven. First thing when, when, when the media put that microphone in front of the mayor's face, start with a message of sympathy, followed by a message of hope, followed by the facts. We have to give them the facts. And you as council, mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council members are gonna be very much on us to making sure that we get you guys those important facts. And we have to make sure that we get that to you in a piece of paper, or we get that to you in some type of written document, so that's what you're reading, not so much taking me out in the hallway and saying, "Give me a brief and let me go out there," and now you just forgot half of what's going on, because we have a lot of things going on. We wanna make sure that we give you the most up-to-date and most accurate information. And then, don't talk to any of the media, newspapers, et cetera, unless you've been briefed in the last fifteen or thirty minutes, because things change on an emergency minute after minute. We wanna make sure that you have the correct and most up-to-date information, or the assessed information that we want, we'd like for you to get out to the media. Recovery, very important. Returning the community to new, normal, and economical continuance. A recovery's gonna be huge, because we're all, we're all in it for the same purpose, for the same reason. Provide that recovery across the board in a fair and in a very diplomatic way. It's not about these constituents, that constituents, it's about the entire city as one. Asking for federal assistance. FEMA and the state will send preliminary damage assessments, which is called PDA teams, to meet with your local jurisdictions. And I had mentioned to you about the IDE, remember the initial damage estimates. We should have some type of initial damage estimates completed, so that when we go to this meeting, we have a general idea of what our estimates are. Because we're, because we fall in with regards to the area D emergency management, which then goes into the county, and then the county goes into a regional level, which is the state, and then the state goes into the federal government, we need to make sure that you as council members, mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, are meeting with these folks that are making those decisions to release some of those funding, so that we can help stabilize our city and get our city back up and running again. So it's very important that our city manager, mayor, council, other members, executive team members, we try to make it to that initial meeting. I know with everything going on, it's gonna be very difficult, but it's very important aspect of how fast and how soon we get our initial damage estimates in, and how soon we can get some funding. Rebuilding the community, implement the city recovery plan. We don't know what it's gonna be until something happens. So we go back to our emergency operations plan, which is on tab number three of your packet, and that'll pretty much give you the whole idea and the whole foundation of how we operate as a city, and what are some of the guidelines that we have to follow through NIM SIMS ICS. Short-term, mid-range, and long-term issues, housing, economical stabilization, rebuilding, restoring, zoning, construction codes. Where does all that come to play? Here's where all that comes to play. We're gonna have to speed a lot of the processes up, in the event that we have a major incident. And speeding those processes up, we're gonna have to cut through that red tape. There's not gonna have to be that red tape, because we want people to rebuild. There's gonna have to be, we're gonna have to work with planning and zoning, public works, to amend, to change, to basically amend some of the city's ordinances, so we can get this back up and running again. You will all be involved in all aspects of the recovery. It's very, very, very critical. Mitigation, lessening the impact of future disasters based on the lessons learned. We're gonna learn from all this. We're gonna learn from major incidents that we may have, major disaster catastrophic events, earthquakes. We're gonna learn from it, we're gonna mitigate from it, and we're gonna be able to rebuild based on what some of our fallouts were, and what we can do better next time around. The cycle keeps going. Preparedness, response, recovery, mitigation. The bottom line, it isn't the responsibility of just one person, it's the responsibility of everyone. So it's not just one person carrying that load. It's all on me, it's all on you, it's all on him, it's all on everyone. We're all in it together. It is in making sure that every day that we act as prepared as we can through planning, training, exercising. Thank you, and emergency preparedness begins with everyone working together.
Excellent, excellent.
Question?
Question. Would this incorporate the schools as well? You know how they always tell you, tell your child that in case of an emergency to stay either at the auditorium or the cafeteria, whatever it is, and then that's where the parents or whoever it is will come to look for the children. Will this incorporate? Or even like say, let's say that there's a disaster here and your children are at another city or whatever, especially for a lot of our employees. Is there a plan so that we sort of communicate with everyone and no one's like, not knowing what happened?
That's a good question. Our emergency operation plan is gonna focus, is mainly tailored for our city. In collaboration, we're gonna be working with the school districts. We're gonna be working with the local colleges, we're gonna be working with the hospitals. When it comes down to that, we'll reach out to the schools, the school will reach out to us, because ultimately, we're the hub. We're the ones that are gonna ultimately help the school districts recover and get funding, because ultimately, the city as a whole activates the emergency operations center. Once we activate it, then we get all resources that we're gonna need through area D. So to answer your question, we do have a collaboration with the school district, however, the school district, as you know, is its own entity, but in the event of a major disaster, we're all gonna work together as one. So whatever that one is, if they need to bring someone out to our EOC and sit within our EOC to help us assess their damages, we're gonna need their initial damage estimates as well, because it's only gonna help them, they're within our school districts. I'm sorry, they're within our city.
And just to answer some of that, since I work with the school district, there is a preparedness, we do retain all of our students within our school until there is a family member available to come and pick up that student, and we are in constant communication with the school district and school police, whether we have an emergency that they will have to contact our city to come out and help us. But all students will be retained at the schools where they're at, and they will not be released to anybody else other than a family member on that emergency card. If nobody shows up, then they will be there with personnel.
Thank you.
And this also falls within our EOC operations, it falls under agency representatives, it can be any agency. That could be the school district, it can be the American Red Cross, it could be Edison, it could be the gas company, et cetera.
I think it's an excellent, thank you for sharing that, excellent presentation. Something I've asked on several occasions in the past about obviously repair and activate EOC and everything else that goes with it, is there's twenty-one schools throughout the city ballpark, six point seven square miles, so to me, those schools are like strategic points throughout, throughout the community, and I have also shared this, maybe we could go back to the two plus two, is maybe having or a session that could be locked up with shovel, axes, and what have you, because if we're talking a major disaster that would occur here, it's all going to be almost impossible. The city doesn't have major tractors or whatever the heck it is to go out and rescue, right? So it's more of the community being involved. And I did ask several years back, maybe we should look at in the future of incorporating the entire community on a Saturday morning or a Sunday morning, where we activate the whole community. It may sound like an impossibility, but just maybe coordinate something like that. My biggest thing would be that those twenty-one schools at least have some type of emergency equipment that could, can be in zones, so that particular captains or whatever you would call them, that they would be able to access that equipment, the life-saving equipment. We're talking about, what's those, that'll open up the vehicles, whatever.
Johnson's line.
Johnson's line, or things of that nature, jacks, whatever it may be. It could be a major disaster where we may be totally, to the point where we can't do much, or the county can't respond because of the major disaster that's occurred. I'm always curious as to what Kaiser's role is, I mean, there's limited capacity in that hospital, and how they would, I guess would service the most injured.
We have also Queen of the Valley, which is right on the other side, and we have in our community.
We're talking about those communities, right? In other words.
Everybody's gonna be impacted.
Exactly. So that's, that's just my suggestion, we could bring that up about, about maybe utilizing or some grants that could provide us some type of equipment, shovels, big axe, you name it.
To have a different depth points.
Exactly. Some residents may not have all that. You get a group of them that could coordinate that throughout the community, or possibly have some type of earthquake preparedness awareness to the community on a Saturday. We just get the whole community involved, certain different zones, they know, hey, this is the captain, or assistant captain of the captain, we're gonna go get this equipment wherever it's at, something like that.
You know, something, and I remember you mentioning this after the windstorm.
Oh, yes, that's right.
And I think that's where.
Yeah, it's, you're right.
You know, these schools were so important in even clearing some yards, clearing, you know, clearing the path for some of the homeowners. But I do wanna thank you, Daniel, for, you know, putting this together, and I feel like we really have come a long way in preparing for emergency disasters or, you know, being prepared. I know that, now you've been dedicated to that position for what, like seven years now?
Five years.
Okay. So I feel like we have really come a long way. You know, I like the idea that the mayor mentioned, and maybe using our neighborhood watch groups, so that, you know, these are, these are neighborhood captains that we can, to your point, Mayor, you know, get some information out where they could access different types of equipment should there be, you know, catastrophic event. And then I do remember that we were participating in some kind of like inoculation program. Do you remember, that was something that we used to do where at the high schools, there was a drill where, you know, people would actually come and get their flu shots, but it was, it was a drill, so that if there was ever an emergency, you know, inoculation program, that there would be some organization, I mean, people would kind of know more or less what to do. Maybe we can look at that again, just to incorporate something along those lines. And my last comment is the contracts. You know, in the event of a catastrophic, catastrophic event, you know, I understand that when we access services, it comes at a premium to the cities. And so I'm wondering, do we have a list of contractors that have already been pre-approved, you know, rates that have already been pre-approved for like, things like gas, or even water supplies, or, you know, food, or whatever, you know, comes to mind in that kind of scenario. We have trash, you know, even if we have, I think, waste management does have some clause in the contract if there are, in an emergency. But having a list of those vendors, I think, pre-approved, so that it doesn't come at a premium to the city when we really, when we're in the most need.
Daniel. And keep in mind, some of the pre-approved items as well, in the event of a catastrophic, catastrophic event, we would piggyback off of also the county's rates, the county's MOUs, and the state's MOUs.
Okay.
So with that, we would still have to filter some of that information through our area D. We pay a premium or per capita, being part of the area D emergency management, and so that's some of the services that come within us participating with area D and going to the training classes and so forth. But those are great points.
Yeah, if we could look at those services and then see what is not part of that list.
Okay.
Because I know that during the windstorm, those were some of the lessons learned.
Absolutely.
And, and those were some of the, that was basically information that would clarify others who were severely impacted.
And, and with regards to the neighborhood watch program, it is definitely something that we're getting out to them right now, when we go out to our neighborhood watch meetings. So it's definitely something that we're promoting, but, and, and also, we're attending a lot, a lot of the events, a lot of the mixers, so if you have events or functions that you know of as well, that we can get the message out and promote, emergency preparedness, neighborhood watch, business watch, et cetera, by all means, please let us know, because we'd be more than happy to attend those.
I'd like to invite you to the women's club.
Yeah.
I'm going to find out, there's a lady by the name of Willa Reynolds, and she's the one that schedules a lot of our, there are more events, like the chief has spoken there, we invite about once every couple of months, when it's something that's, that's important, like credit company fraud or things like that.
Identity theft.
Identity theft and all that. So you know what I'll do, let me contact her, and then I'll, I'll let you know.
We could do a presentation on, where we can promote CERT or emergency preparedness, et cetera.
It'd be really nice.
Absolutely.
Daniel, would it be possible to have conversations with the school district on maybe being able to provide workshops for the parents, since it's where we have the largest group of families coming in, that you can come and present these type of workshops to our parents at our schools?
Yeah, of course. If you actually have a contact, can you, can you get?
I'll get your contact.
Perfect. I know with a lot of the changes within the school district, a lot of folks shifted, changed around, so some of the contacts that I at least knew left or retired and so forth.
I'll get you that contact.
So that'd be great. And then, and then last but not least, I also passed around disaster service worker pamphlet or brochure, just, and, and this goes back to saying how we're all invested in it. I mean, everyone has to invest in it, because when we had our evacuation drill, I had some folks call me back and really wanted to know what their roles were with regards to a major disaster, and then being a public employee, and this says it all. I mean, it's something you don't even have to really put together, because the state already put something together for everyone. So this is a really good pamphlet that, through the safety committee, was a recommendation that we had discussed and talked about, and we're gonna send it out to all city employees, so everyone has a general idea and a feel of what their role and responsibilities are.
Thank you.
If you guys have any more questions, you guys can reach out.
Take a little report.
Just one more comment, is I know that a lot of the local churches would wanna participate, I know that they had a discussion with Father Mike at St. John's, they thought the church had a sort of a disaster area plan, and trained your pastors, hog church, your local government. So, you know, we would like to talk to you.
Absolutely.
Seeing how we could, you know, use employees of the church as a place to go, and I'm sure other churches have the same sort of family-able facilities that you could house people in there for weeks at a time.
Yeah, Pastor Jackson has, has been, has been really great with coming by and chatting with us, and referring to one organization to another, and, and so he's been great, but thank you for being here.
And also with Pastor Rios at the Methodist Church, she has a large group of, she has several women's groups, so it would be nice. She's right here across the street with the Methodist Church, Pastor Paulina Rios.
Let's just get all forty-three denominations, that's how many you have.
Yeah. They have large facilities to be able to house.
Yeah, we actually got a list, I actually have a pretty in-depth list of all those faith-based organizations. That's the, the diplomatic or politically correct way of saying it, because they actually do have presentations and information with regards to the faith-based organizations. I mean, they have a huge component when it comes to emergency response and management.
And they're right in the neighborhood.
Absolutely, absolutely. We have a long list, too. I think the last list I had was well over twenty-six, twenty-seven that I had on the list with contact information. It may have changed.
Right.
Over time, but I remember that.
So maybe having a couple of friends with, you know, or something like that, bring them out.
Yeah. Pastor Jackson came and he recommended that, so yeah, that'd be great, that'd be something great to do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on with the used car dealership code amendment, I think that's the honorable, the distinguished thing in heart.
If I could just say, Mayor, Mr. Cook is the owner of the previous Saturn site, and this was an idea requested.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Cook, is he here?
No.
He's not available to make it today, so I don't know if you wanna have a presentation.
Well, yeah, no, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay.
That's fine. There's a lot of cooks in the town.
Any, any good ways for Jewish students?
Oh, no, no, no. Based on discussions at prior meetings, one of the things that staff came up with was a, should we look to do a code amendment as a list of potential development standards and conditions? And so I've put together, I'll here just take one, pass it around. Put together a list of potential conditions that we could have. These include, you know, minimum site size, do you really want to see, you know, a used car sales facility on a five thousand square foot lot? Probably not. So we're looking to possibly include a minimum half an acre. Also require that they, the business gets a conditional use permit. We wanna make sure that it's gonna be operated, you know, neatly and maintained, and, you know, that it meets all the development standards. We also want to do, we were also looking to propose a three thousand foot separation between each use. Let me see, oh, excuse me, obtain and maintain a retail sales license, because obviously we want the sales tax. We also don't want any outside storage in view of the public right of way. What I mean by outside storage are tires, wheels, things like that. We don't wanna see that from the public right of way. And then also, most of the time, what is associated with automobile sales is repair. What we wanna make sure is, we wanna make sure that the auto repair associated with automobile sales does not morph into the primary use. So we would like, yes, so we would like to cap that at twenty-five percent. So it's accessory to the primary use of the automobile sales. And then also, any work done on auto sales needs to be conducted within an enclosed building. We don't want you out in the open, and that creates to when we have rain, there's MPDES issues, and hazardous, you know, waste such as oil and things like that. So those are the things that we were looking at, should we, should the council give direction to move forward in amending our code?
What's our current?
Currently in our code, used auto sales are not permitted within the freeway commercial zone. It is a conditional use permit used within the IC and the I zones, and those are primarily along Arrow Highway. There are a couple of pockets of IC along the freeway, but very few.
You were thinking of amending it is to use that site, the former Saturn site?
The gentleman, Mr. Cook, has had some interest in some auto dealers, used auto dealers, so, but we've had to, you know, obviously tell him no with our code, so.
Now, where's he, so what's he gonna do with this, is he gonna, does he plan utilizing that old place that he has?
He, well, he had an interest, I don't know how long ago, for a used auto sales business, but because our code doesn't allow it, we had to tell him that the use wouldn't be permitted.
What type of vehicles or what type of use?
I don't know. We didn't get that far.
And, and I don't think that we could really get into that, I mean, if we were looking at land use.
As well, it is not a new county, it is not a special word.
Right.
This guy can be anywhere.
But I think that what we could do is set a standard where he doesn't have like clunkers there, that it's something like.
Right.
You know, like used cars that look in good condition.
Right.
You know, not just any old thing that he could just sell.
Right.
There's one that comes to mind off of, I think it's Frasier and.
Garvey?
I'm talking about.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, Frasier and Garvey?
Frasier and Garvey?
It's a mechanic shop now.
On the corner, right?
It really is.
Oh, yes, that one. That's actually automobile repair, if I recall correctly, yeah.
It's not on car sales anymore.
I think, no, it's not.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's what we're trying to prevent.
Yeah. So, that's all there is.
Because there is an auto mechanic at two doors down from there.
Oh, yeah.
And there was also.
So what we'd like to do is, I'm sorry.
I think you should have all like some type of architectural standards, probably put your sign in.
Oh, yeah.
How they, how they meet in the building.
Right. And that can all be part of the conditional use permit as conditions.
And also the type of cars that they sell, see, that's what, you know, like I said, no, no clunkers, no storage, you said of a.
Right.
Whole bunch of vehicles that are falling apart and dirty and, you know.
Maintain them clean, because sometimes they.
Maybe your car is not old, your car was like two thousand and five, nothing less than older than two thousand and five.
I don't know the answer to that.
I don't know the answer to that either, but we can look into that.
Yeah. Just as long as they're in good condition. That could be tough to enforce, I mean.
I mean, maybe if they're placed in good condition, you know how the car dealers wash their cars.
Right.
I mean, they're not, when you probably look at them, they're not dusted and dirty.
Right.
There was one used car dealership that was off of, it's off the 10th freeway and near the LA Fitness proposed site, right across the street, and that wasn't bad, it was well managed, and they, they closed it. And that was, that was probably, you know, more of what we would like to see versus what we have seen.
So we could do two things tonight, we could initiate the code amendment tonight, or we could wait until Mr. Cook come give a presentation to us to what he really wants to do, and see what, how he feels.
How you'd like to.
Talk about the condition. to you as to what he really wants to do and see how he feels about the condition that he wants to clear and come to, so we can do whatever council wishes to do.
I would say let's wait and then let's also get some of those conditions.
Oh, yeah.
Really, you know.
I would like to see what we need to want. Yeah, explain it to us and tell us exactly.
Right.
You know, we may be throwing around a budget and it's not even close to what he probably has in plan for that.
He must have put it in the last slide.
Yeah.
Can you show us, you say three thousand feet away, you know, along the freeway? Can you kind of draw a map and tell us?
Yeah, what I can do is, what I can do is from Mr. Cook's site, then I can do a radius of three thousand feet so you can see from his site, you know, where others would be able to go.
But there's not a lot of space for us to go there.
No, there's no.
Not based on these, no.
No. I know the area well, and that's why I'm thinking, like, where would they go?
Well, I mean, behind the Walmart and down the street where the, there are larger sites around.
Oh, yes, but the Walmart would be way down across the freeway.
They're gonna propose it, right?
You know? Yeah, but I'm talking about the area itself where he is, where he's proposing.
But you have to think, whenever we do the code amendment, you allow that to use to the IC zone, then it could happen anywhere in the IC zone.
FC, sorry, FC sign.
Which is pretty much all over the freeway, anywhere over the freeway.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, so the next, I thought we have a bunch going on, the club session, so I will ask.